I saw a whiteboard, please say okay to start.
Okay, I got the okay to start. So we'll call the meeting in order. Need agenda approval?
I'll make most to approve.
And I would like to discuss that or have a clarification of why, which one we are approving.
Be the new agenda, the revised agenda.
And is there reasons for that?
Yep, just like I told you on the email or message, essentially, we haven't set up a time and place for the meetings.
That was the intent of that topic to be on this agenda.
Well, we're setting the dates that she already had dates on there.
Yes.
Approved through the schools, so.
I don't know that the schools have anything to say about that.
It's their building. We have to be able to use their gymnasiums.
For the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, that was not made clear to me.
Yep, I contacted both principals and still waiting on dates that work for them, so.
Cause I thought we could use our facilities instead of theirs, so I'm not gonna second the motion.
I will second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of July twenty ninth, twenty five board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's fine. Appointment of Ann Michael to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution fifty four dash two zero two five designate vote representative for Iowa State Association of Counties.
I'll move to approve the list that's provided for us.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great at Tumwah Partners in Progress Agreement. Mark, you wanna speak on this?
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning.
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 So just a recap of the, the last meeting that we had spoke about this, this is a three year agreement and I understand that one of the issues in the agreement was the use of the COLA for the second two years, so I did speak with our Board of Directors and they're fine with removing that language out of there, so I guess if you have any other questions or concerns with the agreement, then otherwise we can strike the COLA increases out for years two and three and then every, all the other language would remain the same.
Okay. That was the question brought up, so.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve with the changes.
And I'm gonna second, but I wanna discuss something before we vote. I did get some feedback from some small businesses that they were, saw this on the agenda and they gave me some concerns about the involvement of your organization with small businesses. I wanted you to know that.
Okay.
And I, I did second the motion notice. So, but I think perhaps we need to do some discussion on how better to meet some of their, their needs in, in this whole process, so.
Sure.
We can, we can. I just want you to be aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I think a lot of it is just a concern that Carrie had. When we talk about deliverables. That's why it was important that she met with you to understand what deliverables are from you. It's not like getting a UPS package.
Right.
And we do have a list of deliverables as part of this contract, so.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, so we have first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Waplo County nine one one service board report.
Thank you. Um, today I wanted to talk about a group of people that are actually an arm of you, the Board of Supervisors, that kinda work in the shadows and that's the nine one one service board. I don't know that we've ever come before you to deliver a report and I think we should start doing that. It's kinda been on my bucket list since I've been chairman for the last four or five years and today I'm not gonna give you a full report, but I'm gonna give you a highlight, high level and just kinda introduce you to the board and who they are and what they do. And so the packet I gave you this morning is just that, just some high level information and I'm gonna just go over four things with you. So I'll talk about their purpose, talk about who they are, a little bit about the financials and current needs and projects. Uh, so under chapter thirty four A of the Iowa Code talks about emergency telephone systems and that's what created nine one one in Iowa. Won't go, I won't dive into the history today, even though I love to do that kinda stuff, I love background. But in, in Waplo County, I believe that started somewhere around nineteen ninety when we started talking about current nine one one level service and that's when we got addressing. I remember thirty one years ago when I started EMS, we were still using rollouts and boxes and those kinds of things and so learning an address was a new thing for us and then we moved on to enhance nine one one where we had the ability to pinpoint somebody's location based on, on their, their, their phone and then later on come cell phones. And so now we're talking about next generation nine one one, which means we can text and video and all those kinds of things in nine one, so today we can text. Next step is gonna be being able to send live feeds to, to dispatch, so how far we've come in just a short period of time with the evolution of nine one. So who is the nine one board? The nine one board, and I gave you the section of Iowa Code that talks about that and a list of our, our members. They're basically any entity that has a stake in the game that provides emergency services, so you'll see uh, there's a list of twelve folks on our board currently representing the agency fire department, the Blakesburg Fire and Rescue Department, the City of Eldon, the Eldon Fire and Rescue Department, Benton Township, which is Hedrick, City of Atumwah, Representative Atumwah Fire, Waplo County, Waplo County Rule Fire Agency, the Eddyville Community Fire Board, Batavia Volunteer Fire, Emergency Management, the Atumwah Police Chief and the Waplo County Sheriff are the voting member positions. We also had some non-voting, non-voting spots, which is our EMS representatives from ORMCs uh, and then the one from the EMS Association and then of course we have our past chairman, Mike Holcomb, that has invested many years on the board, um, that, that was my predecessor. And Mike could, Mike could share a lot of great stories about a lot of great progress over the years with the nine one board. We were lucky to have some very dedicated people on our board in the past, including Mike, former auditor, Philistine and, and Phil Davis from Agency, were some very, very key people on the board in the past. So what is it that the board responsible for doing? So per code, the Board of Supervisors is to, is to establish that board and they are to provide a nine one one service plan, which basically tells the State Department of Homeland Security, well, how are we gonna deliver nine one one services? And it outlines that. For you, to make it nice and easily digestible, I give you this graphic here that kinda shows you how a nine one one call works with the technology. So there's four different pieces of, of the system. Uh, there's call taking, there's radio communications, there's data transfer and there's public alerting and there's a four distinct different pieces and there's different stakeholders associated with that. So call taking is what I'm gonna talk primarily about today. Radio communications is another piece, that's what gives us our land mobile radios to allow us dispatch to talk to our responders. Uh, there's data transfer, which if you remember about three or four years ago, the Sheriff's Office led a project um, and brought in stakeholders like the Police Department, Save Atumwah, you as the board and some nonprofit partners like Legacy to fund a new computer aided dispatch software, that was about a four hundred thousand dollar project, very successful. And it was driven because the software they were using was very antiquated and not gonna be supported, so for the first time all of our entities are on one common operating platform, so that was a huge project when it comes to data transfer. And then fourth is public alerting to public safety authorities and that's a role we do in emergency management. I wanna talk a little more in depth about the first two and that's the call taking and radio communications. So the nine one one board works with a pot of money, it's not a great pot of money, but it's a little bit and it's the piece of your cellphone bill that you see that says nine one one surcharge. And right now it's a dollar. And for, for the public listening, that dollar goes to this board to be used for infrastructure, so the primary responsibility nine one board is to make sure that we have all of the infrastructure for taking and displacing a nine one call. And that means answering the phone, typing it into that data system, pushing the button to activate on the radio system to act, to send first responders to your call. That's the, that's the flow of, of a nine one one call. So there's a lot of hardware and components that go into all of that and that's what we utilize the surcharge money for. Again, there's two pieces to that, there's the call taking piece, there's the radio communication piece, they're two different systems. What we've worked on as a nine one board is to, um, keep that up to date and to keep up with changes. Let me see, next step. If you, if you flip to the next page. I believe I took over chair position in twenty twenty and then we started talking about looking toward the future and having long range plans. And at that time I started an internal study about what are next steps in some of the evolution of, of these systems. In twenty three, I gave a report to the nine one board to start thinking about this stuff more in depth and we come up with different levels of options for our radio system, which again is one piece of the, of the puzzle. The primary piece is all of the equipment at what's called a PSAP or a Public Safety Answering Point, we know it as a dispatch is the common slang. There is a lot of computer equipment involved in there that has to be kept up to date. Um, and every ten years we do a refresh on it, so that is our first priority is everything connected with dispatch. Second priority is everything to do with the radios. We've done a pretty good job of keeping up with all that to date. With dispatch. Where we're starting to really have conversation is what's next steps for improving our radio communications and that's where we're gonna have some significant gaps. Before I get into that too much, let me, let me keep going. Next page was recommendations from the study on the tower system. And I don't wanna get too far into the weeds on radios, cause this will, this will be a little, little too much and technical and we can save that for a work session, but uh, high level on radios. There's many different configurations of radio systems. So today our responders use what's called a simplex VHF system or very high frequency. And simplex simply means it's talking to one tower. And everybody can see it up here on the hill next to the radio broadcast towers. Uh, that was constructed in twenty thirteen because a lot of our radio communication antennas was on top of the old Saint Joe Hospital. If you remember, when the hospital was coming down, we had to find a new home. And so the nine one board did a project to construct that tower and we moved into that tower in twenty thirteen, which seems like a long time ago. But it really isn't, I mean, time does fly. Um, and so in radio world, you get about ten years out of a radio, just like we get ten years out of the computer systems and dispatch. We're well past that, so what we're finding is that we're kind of in this middle ground where in twenty thirteen, we were pretty much ahead of the game, we were doing things our neighbors weren't doing, we were building tower, upgrading to digital technology, kinda navigating some changes in the FCC world where they were splitting frequencies, cause there's too many things on the air. Uh, so now what's happened is in the meantime, well, we've been paying on this tower, making the payments, which final payments next year, we're pretty excited about that. A new technology has emerged and become available for first responders and it's seven eight hundred megahertz and what happened was the FCC took old analog radio or TV spectrum that's no longer used, reserved it for public safety and they, they planned it out in a very, how do I describe this? Calculated way, so the way VHF has evolved over the years is it wasn't really planned. So there wasn't a, a pre-described radio plan that said this channel does these frequencies, this channel does these frequencies, this channel. VHF didn't happen that way. Radios evolved as we evolved. And we just kinda grabbed frequencies out of the air and used them in the spectrum, so there's a lot of interference, there's a lot of crawling over each other in that spectrum with narrow banded, which basically splitting a frequency in two and it's a very inefficient spectrum now, the one we're currently using. And so we're seeing a lot of fail in, a lot of poor performance issues and just the technology is now outdated. So what's next? While looking at moving to the new pre-planned, um, a lot more efficient seven eight hundred megahertz band spectrum. But what's changed since twenty thirteen, the cost of everything is, is triple what it used to be, you know, to, to do that same thing. Plus, in the seven eight hundred megahertz radio space, it performs differently than VHF, which means we require more towers to get that same coverage or better coverage, but doing it a better way. Uh, all of us carry a, a radio similar to how seven eight hundred megahertz works, so seven eight hundred megahertz is what's called trunk radios, which means there's a bunch of towers and they all talk to each other. That's what your cellphone is. So you talk on a trunk radio every day. And so what do our responders do when they're frustrated with their simplex radio, um, that's now outdated technology, they pick up their cellphone. And it works better. Well, sure it does, because they have more towers and it's built, it's built the way we expect. Problem is, a cellphone is not really a device that's made for tactical applications, so you can't really talk on the phone and do the things that our responders do, whether you're a law enforcement officer, a medic or a fireman. So we still need that, that mobile radio. Uh, so at the end of the study, we had some recommendations to work on to try and figure out how do we get slowly moved into that space? And the reason we did the slow approach rather than just come to the board to ask for a big bond issue was because we were being respectful of changes that you're still dealing with in funding. But we're kinda to the juncture where we, we really need to do something that's a big project. And looking financially, and if you, if you flip through, I've shared with you my worksheet for this year's budget. And then past that, there's some graphics that show you kinda historical funding. We traditionally have taken in about three hundred thousand dollars in surcharge a year. And our expenses are just slightly less than that. But if you look at some numbers, like give you some raw numbers on what it costs to maintain such systems. In three years' time will be the ten year mark to refresh everything in the call taking side and the dispatch side, that's about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. If you look at what we have in just straight up maintenance costs, our current budget for twenty six. Can't get to the right columns, you're quoting the wrong thing. It's about three sixty, but you can take away, uh, we've budgeted heavily on equipment. So you can take away about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of that. So we're about two hundred thousand raw costs. If we added the cost, projected cost, if we were in a trunk radio system, it's about a hundred fifty thousand. So we're gonna be doing good to break even just to maintain a system once it's built, but not, we don't have the bandwidth to do the build, if that makes sense. So at some point, um, the, the, what the nine one board needs to do is really take a deep dive into the study and the recommendations and come up with a solid recommendation for you and come to you and say this is what we believe next step should be and here's what that spend is gonna be. There's a sheet in here that kinda gives you different levels, when I did that study, that shows you several different options, cause I like to have options to pick from. Uh, and we did vet, uh, over the last several years, it's kinda what we've been doing, is looking at all the different ways to do this. From the, from doing nothing and we know where that is gonna lead us, to doing a little with our current system, to do a little bit with the seven eight hundred megahertz system. Uh, we looked at things like sharing towers with cell companies and, and we found a lot of issues with that, to just building out a proper system. And it's, we've kinda taken our time flushing that stuff out and really taking into consideration, is there a more cost effective way to do this versus a full build out? And those are conversations we need to finalize, but it's becoming clear to me what that answer is if we truly want a reliable system uh, on the radio side of things. So for me, I always worry about the money, that's where my, my, my fir- first worry is, is how we're gonna sustain and, and maintain whatever system we have. So our tower, tower is paid off next year, which frees up about fifty thousand dollars. But again, you can see how quickly that's gonna get chewed up just in, in maintenance costs. The other concerns I've been watching, uh, especially this year and I did notice that the wireless revenue took a dive, I'm not sure why yet, I have to talk to the state and see if they have any insight onto that. Uh, is they, at the last minute in the legislature's senate file six fifty nine was passed and what that was about, I don't know if I've talked to you about in this group. The state has state responsibilities for the state nine one one system and basically they, they're managing the network of servers that manage all those, the call traffic. What we did and what eighty percent of Iowa counties did, uh, in twenty two and went live in twenty three for us was signing onto the state shared call system. Where what that means, instead of us maintaining our own servers to process all those nine one calls, we use a state server. Uh, it saves us money and it creates efficiency and so it was extremely popular program, a lot of counties said, hey, this is cost savings, this makes sense. Uh, not only does it save us money, but it saves us a lot of headaches, cause we don't have to maintain that infrastructure. Well, it was, it's one of those good bad problems, so it was so wildly successful, it exceeded their expectations and so it made the state run short uh, on their, on their fund to maintain it, so they're out of deficit and they need to build a new data center to handle all that and there may be a few more counties yet. Uh, we're eighty out of ninety nine, which is pretty darn successful. So they ran short. What the recommendation was is to raise the surcharge to a dollar and a quarter, we feel most folks wouldn't have a problem with that. Uh, and then maybe take a little more percentage of the wireless money that they give to us. That didn't fly past the governor's office and so it sat tabled at the legislature until the literally very last minute of session when they said the only way you're gonna go home is for us to deal with this. Well, at midnight, they want answers to go home, so they said, well, just send the locals a bill. So we have things like that happen to us. So what, what it stands now is we're gonna get a bill as a local nine one boards to fill the gap with the state until they can revisit this hopefully and raise the surcharge, which we hope will happen next legislative session. Who knows, you know how the legislative temperament is right now. So what does that mean for us locally? Well, that's about a thirty six thousand dollar hit for us, the current projection, so. It's, I say all that to say it's, it's quite obvious to me, the only thing we're gonna be able to do on the go forward with nine one one surcharge money is just do the maintenance. We really have no capacity or bandwidth to do any expansion, build out, uh, improvement to the radio system. We can just maintain what we have from the call taking side of dispatch and the radio side. So at some point, we're gonna have to have a, a conversation about how do we finance that? Um, and so that was one of the reasons I wanted to bring the nine one board to your attention, put that on your radar. The other reason was, I know you're, uh, doing some considerations with maybe, uh, renewable energy and looking at, at windmills. And so I bring that up because, um, if that moves forward and we do authorize that and have some zoning for that, we need to be cognizant of where we may potentially put nine one one broadcast towers and make sure those two things don't interfere with each other. I think we can, if we plan ahead, we can make sure that's not a conflict. And then I don't know what that does for the revenue side of things, but maybe that's a potential funding source we could tap into, I think Brian, you mentioned that to help fund nine one communications. That'd be a wonderful thing if that was a possibility. Always looking for opportunities to fund things without asking the PAX Bears for it. That was extremely high level, I hope. Dive into what the nine one board does.
Where are we at on Sarah Tower with Mahaska County?
Yeah, so thank you for that. Um, so Darren did facilitate a meeting between you guys and the Mahaska Board of Supervisors to talk about how do we get our toe dipped into the seven eight hundred megahertz world? And just a little aside about that, there's two different systems that that exists, there's the state system, which is the ISIC system and then there's a SARA system, which is Shared Area Radio Agreement that was around before the state did their project. And it's a, um, I forget how many different counties, several, in our area of the state that share a radio, uh, network. And it works, they, they both the same on a base level. Uh, the state system is built for basically mobile to mobile, it's, it's still not built for portable indoor coverage like we expect, we would have to build out more. And the SARA system, we'd have to build it up too, uh, to do in, indoor coverage, but we looked at both of those um, in our study and, and decided to go with Sarah, because, um, our neighbors have had great success with it. It would allow us to connect with Mahaska County, which we do have shared response responsibilities with Eddyville. But what we need is a connection to their tower from our tower. And where we're at with that, to answer your question Darren, is it's in the hands of, of Raycom and the consultant, they're talking, so they're doing the tech talk. Raycom has produced the map they asked for to give us the visual representation and then the consultant has asked a few more tech questions. As soon as, as, as they get that back to them, then we're just waiting on the consultant to make a recommendation to their board. So I'm hoping pretty soon I'll come to you and say, can we have another meeting? Once we get that done, I think we can move forward.
Tim, it's my understanding that behind the rest of the state in terms of this communication system is, by that I mean relative to other counties, other cities, is that your perception?
Yes, uh, especially if county's our size. Um, so we're in a unique position in that most of the counties to the north of us have transitioned to seven hundred megahertz. Counties to the south are still on VHF, uh, but they're a lot more sparsely populated counties, probably have even greater financial struggles than what we're facing. Um, so we're, at least for a period of time, gonna have, have access to both systems, so we already have VHF in our vehicles and have all that capability. We'll just be adding another layer, which is the seven eight hundred megahertz. What we've done to try and kinda bridge that gap is identify, kinda getting into that a little bit staged. So as the sheriff has bought new vehicles, we've asked him to purchase, and we purchased for him, a radio that'll do both. And so that's our recommendation right now is get a radio that'll do both, because as you all know, we're all trying to be asked to do more or less and you can't, you have to spread your people thin, so we're more and more often helping our neighbors. And so it's not uncommon to go help a neighbor, neighboring county with a response, so we need to be able to speak on their platform, so at least for the next several years, I think we're gonna have to have both platforms.
Aren't we, we're giving away a hundred thousand dollars for the tower?
Well, not for tower, um, for, so it's gonna take five hundred thousand ish to do the SARA connection and then we kinda talked about doing another five hundred thousand, which was a, a permanent bridge between seven eight hundred megahertz and VHF. We still aren't committed on that yet, cause we're not sure that's the way to go or if we just invest that money to keep moving people for, to the platform. Um, but we did identify that our everyday users like the Sheriff's Office, Atumwah Police Department, Atumwah Fire Department, they, they need to get migrated first. They do the most call volume, they have the greatest need. Our volunteer departments, um, serve as well, but they're okay with using what they got until we can get our, our high volume users transition. And it's, it's kinda that, uh, it's a double edged sword. The slow go approach lets you kinda react to some of these changes that are being thrown at us with the funding, but it draws out our transition versus doing a big project and getting it over with. And we can fight raising prices that way too, so I, I think we've taken that conservative approach for the last five years. I, I think we're all a little frustrated how long it's taking us just to get a basic step like a connection. I think once we get that connection made, maybe we need to talk about doing a little more accelerated approach. But I, I'm not here for that today, I'm only here today to bring awareness to you about what the nine one board is, what they do, what they're talking about, kinda a little bit about what our money situation is and just, just to kinda put it on your radar and maybe I can answer some more questions.
I talked to Sean Cantwell, the Atumwah Fire Chief, and he is certainly aware of the need for this and he pointed that out to me. Is there potential for us to partner with the city? The city does part of the, the tower system and, and we do part, is there precedence for that in other areas?
I think all of it's on the table. I, I think we all, yeah, I think that would be the right answer. Because when we built the tower that we have today, we had money available to make the payment. The go forward, we're not gonna be able to do that, we're, the, the money we'll have to our disposal from surcharge will only pay for maintenance contracts. That's it. We have no extra money bandwidth to, to do, to do a build out again and, and some of that's just because, um, most of it's because of rising costs and just the fact the more equipment you have, the more maintenance you have. So, um, it's gonna take some creative approach, whether it's a bond, combination of local funding, other revenue streams, or those are the kinda things that we need to bring to your level, so we need to come up with a recommendation as a board and then bring it to you and say, okay, how, how do you see us paying for this?
Have you had this conversation with the city council and at this point yet?
Okay, he is, I, we're aware of their communication issues, but, uh, they need to be part of our conversation circle.
And then, could you do some research on what the percentage would be if we do a combination like fifty fifty or would it be we would do more, they would do more?
I think first we need to come up with a recommend- I think first we need to come up with a recommendation and show you what that looks like, and then have that conversation.
Okay, sure.
To be fair.
Got to get them there, so.
Yeah. And, and part of the reason I also bring this up, and I've said this before when we're talking about EMS, is that I know from your seat, this is just one of many problems you're looking at. So you're looking at what do we do with EMS, looking at jail expansion, looking at, you know, what other, other needs are out there. There's only so much bonding ability, there's only so much ability as a public to pay those bonds. So I think it all has to be put in perspective, and, and so I think it would be a disservice if I didn't at least bring this to you and put it on your radar and for further this conversation.
And it's always been in my opinion that the EMS topic is dependent on the dispatch system. So there is a little bit of spillover in that topic to this topic.
There's a lot of spillover, and it's, it's all, we, so at ESMAC, our EMS Advisory Council, which is going extremely well, by the way, EM, University Medical Dispatch is a huge topic of conversation, but it was also, I think, obvious to our, our group the last time we met, just how all of this is a big spider web. It's all connected. You pull here, it pulls here. You know, one example is, you know, it all starts at dispatch, like you said. But if we expand the jail, that, that puts more responsibilities on the person running doors, it's also answering the radio. I mean, it's just, everything's connected, and so we have to just keep that in mind as we make decisions here, it's kind of affect over here.
Appreciate the information, Tim.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any other business? Turn on your mic there and state your name.
Yes, Kevin Holthauser. And I was not able to hear, I was sitting in the front row, early discussions about the agenda. Just why it was changed.
We're going to have the public hearings at the public schools. And we have to coordinate that with the schools first. So we haven't, we hadn't made contact with the principals still yesterday, so.
That's the only reason why I've changed any agenda then?
Yes, it'll be on the next agenda, next agenda, so, next meeting.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm retired, and so I'm sort of flexible on my time. But I looked on the agenda Sunday, and the energy ordinance was there.
Yeah, I changed it many mornings.
I looked on the paper this morning, and it was front page of the paper. You can't be changing these agendas at the last minute. That's, the public relies on paper, probably was on the radio.
Public, public relies on us having a facility to hold these meetings too, so.
Well, maybe you should have thought of that headed.
I didn't put this on the agenda, so that's what I did when I thought of it, I changed it. So.
Last minute, from Sunday to...
I couldn't change it over the weekend, I had to wait for the secretary to get here on Monday, so.
All right, well, it's just not a good way to do business, especially with the public. Last minute changes, you know. I'd been pissed, I'm kind of pissed anyway, but I'd been pissed if I had to take off work, and I don't, I don't care what's on the agenda, if I wanted to speak to it and thinking it wasn't going to happen.
Different.
I looked at two different places and find out that it's not happening that day. So I just, going forward, I think the board needs to think about that. So it's going to be on the next agenda.
The next agenda.
What date is that?
Two weeks from today. 26th, 30th.
It'll be the 26th.
Yes, ma'am, you can say something.
All right, any other business? Leaving it on the agenda and tabling it would have been a more appropriate solution, in my opinion. Right, but I'm agreeing with your position.
Anybody else?
I've contacted Cardone to Eddieville, and then we'll try to have one here, so. Correct. Preferably, yes, so everybody can come.
So what, what days are you intending to have those?
They haven't contacted me back when they're available, so as soon as they have an opening, that's when we'll do it, so. We'll try to get them all in one week if we can, so.
Things for you. Jared Hirschberger with Dusty Fox Wind. So the community grants are back open, cycle. Do you guys here know of any nonprofits that are interested? That is a $5,000 quarterly grant. So this is the beginning of the quarter, we'll be ending that in three, in three months. We will be at ISAC again this year. I, I know a couple of you were there last year. And, and this, this year, we are going to be part of the sponsoring the Cubs game. So we will be, be giving, giving a little bit of, through that sponsorship, a little, a little bit of extra Cubs cash to, to help out with purchasing drinks or, or, or refreshments. So we will be there again doing that. Hey, I was just, I had a question about the public hearings, but I think that's mostly been answered. So we'll, we'll be looking forward to getting those set next week. And
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yes, of course, two weeks. And Mr. Batterson, I did get your question over email. I, I, and, you know, I'm, I, we, as I've told the other two, you know, we, we don't give out the information of our landowners.
You can give me a number though, right?
A number of landowners? You know, I'm not up to date on that. So yeah, we keep, we keep the, the names confidential, though. That, that is, that is just part of our, that is just part of our practice as a company. Beyond that, is there any questions for me?
Nope.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Call is in favor?
Aye.
We're going to have a opioid meeting in here, so.